Good evening. I'm Cynthia Robichaud. I'm Chairman of the Anaronda County Human Relations Commission. And I'd just like to thank all of you for coming out tonight, especially when they're calling for snow. We really appreciate your being here. The Anaronda County Human Relations Commission is a non-legislative body established by executive order and appointed by county executive. Our mission is to promote fairness, eliminate discrimination and harassment in both public and private sectors, and advance understanding and effective communication among people of different cultures. I would like to recognize members of the commission that are in here. If they could stand up in the audience, please. They're mostly over in that area. Thank you. We all know that community-police relations is a major topic of concern across our country right now. And when members of the Caucus of African-American Leaders approached county executive Steve Schu and chief of police Timothy Altamari about the possibility of having a public discussion on this matter, both men thought it would better serve our county residents to be proactive and to seek out concerns, issues, and possible solutions rather than to address issues reactively. The Human Relations Commission is pleased to have been charged by the county executive to work with the director and the staff of his constituent services office to sponsor this series of town hall meetings. As you entered tonight, I am hoping that you will have noted that our commissioners, along with county executive staff, have been greeting you and providing information on tonight's procedures. We're looking forward to receiving your comments as we plan the ongoing activities of the commission, so we thank you in advance for your participation. County Executive Schu has a strong interest in strengthening the mutual relationship between the county police department and the community that they serve. A good first step in any relationship is open communication. It is my pleasure and privilege to introduce to you our county executive Steve Schu and to invite all of you to join with him in this evening's conversation. Thank you. Steve?
(applause). Is that your phone? Is that your phone?
No.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. This is the second event of this kind that we've conducted in Anaronda County, and it's such a pleasure for me to be here with so many leaders in public safety and here in the community, as well as academic leaders. I want to acknowledge a couple elected officials. Councilman Andrew Pusky is here this evening. Thank you for being here, councilman. His able assistant Dave Hemeniak is also with us. Thank you for being here, Dave. And former councilman for this community Bert Rice is here this evening. Thank you for being here, Bert.[164.16][164.16](applause). I also want to acknowledge the representatives that are present from our fabulous police department. I feel very privileged to be working with this group of people. They are so dedicated to our community, and I'm proud to be the county executive of a community that treats its police officers with respect and with the dignity that they deserve.[186.29][186.29](applause). You're here. This evening begins a conversation that, as Cindy mentioned, has been topping the headlines over the past year throughout the United States, and that is police and community relations. This is an important conversation to start and to continue into the foreseeable future. Our administration has made a very serious commitment to public safety this year, and I thank the county council for their support in making those initiatives a reality. We have added 20 additional public safety professionals this year alone. 180 new police vehicles will be coming online this year. We will be beginning the planning stages and construction for a new police academy to train our professionals, and we will be planning and beginning construction of a new central booking facility which will make law enforcement in this community much more efficient. In fact, taken together, those investments are most certainly the largest single investment in public safety in a single year in the history of Anaronda County. These investments are being made because we understand the importance of keeping you and your families and your properties safe. But part of our commitment to public safety is a pledge to keep an open dialogue between our police and those they protect. By keeping the lines of communication open, educating both sides about the perception and responsibilities of one another, we can ensure that we can continue our progress in making our county the best place to live, work, and start a business in the state of Maryland. So without further delay, I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening, Derek Matthews.[301.12][301.12](applause).
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, town hall. All right, all right, all right. So let me, I'm going to lay out a few things before we get started. Again, my name is Derek Matthews, and very much like you, I'm another concerned member of this community that we all love and want to see the community continue to move in a forward direction. As we said, we're here this evening to take a proactive approach to discuss and have an open dialogue regarding better communication between the police department and our county, citizens of the county. As we all know, the issue in some cases is an issue that we can all agree is of great importance to the community. Our objective tonight is to have a clear, concise pathway that leads us to having better trust between the police and the residents that it serves. My objective tonight is to allow the dialogue and the conversations to remain open and civil, and try to moderate the time and get through what we would like to accomplish tonight. The outcome overall is to educate the public on some things about our police department, its roles and responsibility, while simultaneously educating the police department on some things within the community that they may or may not be aware of until we give you an opportunity to bring them to the forefront. So what we're going to do, as we do that and move through our agenda tonight, is as we get out into our question-and-answer portion, we're going to record everything. If everybody would look to the right, you'll see some paper that we've taped to the wall. What we did in our last session is, as you come up to the mic and give us the things that you'd like to hear, and as the dialogue goes on between you and the panel members when we get to that, we're going to record. And as we record, I will give a synopsis of the night and kind of recap of the expectations of moving forward. And what I'd like to ask is that when you come up, that you afford yourself an opportunity to be very clear on what it is you would like to be heard on, and I will try to gauge when at some point if it becomes something other than a question or something that we really need to get to. Okay? So what I'd like to do is get us started here. So our first panelist that we're going to bring up tonight is Chief Altamari, and he's going to discuss the accountability of the police department in dealing with complaints. Chief Altamari started his police career with the Annapolis Police Department in January of 1994 after serving four years as a United States Marine infantryman. As captain, he commanded the Northern and Southern Patrol Districts, which he held diverse community ranging from Baltimore city border into the north to Calvert County line and to the south. Tim was appointed chief of police in Anaronda County in December of 2014. He holds a bachelor's and a master's in management from John Hopkins University, Division of Public Safety, Leadership, and is a graduate of Pennsylvania State University's Police Executive Leadership Basic Advanced Courses. And I also look at him as a dear friend and a person who holds all of his employees accountable for what they do. Chief Altamari, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Let's give him a hand.[501.71][501.71](applause).
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for coming out tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't start my very short spiel here with a thank you to Ms. Cindy from the Human Relations Commission, my boss, Mr. Schu, and Derek, and indeed every member of the panel up here, because if you see us up here, it means we're willing to be a part of a solution and that we're willing to be proactive and communicative in our approaches. And I think it's a pretty cool thing that we're doing this, and the communication is improving over time instead of getting shut down over time when you have a national backdrop that has a lot of ugliness in it. And by the grace of God in Anaronda County, we've avoided very much of that, and I feel lucky to be the chief in such a jurisdiction. So let's talk for a moment about accountability. One of the things that another dear friend of mine, the Reverend Dr. Corletta Allen, says about the Anaronda County Police Department is that we do a lot of things extremely right, but one of the things that we do wrong is we don't tell people what we do right. And she's probably extremely right about that. So in Anaronda County, we're fortunate to have a system in place that helps me ensure accountability. When a concern comes into the police department, you are automatically given to a supervisor whose job it is to make sure that we're doing a critical analysis of the situation in question and that it's documented and maintained. Every internal complaint gets a tracking number through which the police department is able to monitor progress on it. I get daily updates from the commander of our professional standards unit, Lieutenant Greg Speed, on situations evolving, and we have a pretty cool system called the Personnel Early Warning System wherein even if complaints are deemed not sustained, and that means we don't have enough to say the officer did something wrong, even if that happens several times in the course of a year, we get a red flag that comes up in our system, and we know that a given officer has had X number of complaints on him for Y conduct. So if an officer's having trouble at home, say it's a great guy or gal, they're having trouble at home and it's making them cranky at work. We come up with several discourtesy complaints in the space of a year. We have the mechanism to isolate that, get the commanders involved in a really critical analysis of the situation, get the cop help if that's what we need to do, get the cop training if that's what we need to do, even if the cop hasn't been found to do anything wrong. So we take complaints very seriously in Anaronda County, and that is by design. If you'll allow me, I'm going to segue here a moment. Keep me honest on time, Ms. Nancy, but I want to read to you from the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics. And I'm not doing this as an exercise in avoiding speaking with you tonight. I'm doing it because there's some really kind of fundamental and seminal ideas in here that if you want to be a good cop, you have to adhere to. And in Anaronda County, we do the very best we can to adhere to all of it. "As a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve mankind, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all men and women to liberty, equality, and justice." I'm skipping a spot here on your personal life because I think that's, the next part is more important to what we're discussing tonight. "I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings, prejudices, animosities, or friendships to influence my decisions. With no compromise for crime and with relentless prosecution of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear or favor, malice or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true to the ethics of police service. I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals, dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, that of law enforcement." So why do I read that to you? Because this is the roadmap to doing policing in a free society in which we live, the greatest of free societies on earth, the United States of America. And this is what I give to my folks every day as the roadmap to staying on the right side of things and to doing it right out there in our communities. Public trust is a bank account in which we have to put a deposit every day so that on the eventual day I have to make a withdrawal, I'm still, I still have a positive balance. We believe that very strongly in Anaronda County, and as long as I wear the badge that says "Police Chief" on it, that's not going to change. Thank you.[848.43][848.43](applause).
Thank you, chief. So we'll get an opportunity to hear from each panelist, and then again, we'll get an opportunity to come out into the audience and have you come up to the mic and address what each speaker is going to bring. So our next speaker is Deputy Chief of Police Gerard A. Flemings. Deputy Chief Flemings began his 29-year law enforcement career with the Anaronda County Police Department in August of 1986. In 2004, he was promoted to the rank of captain, serving four years as Special Operations Division Commander and four years as a Western District Commander until his retirement from the police department in March of 2012. I always like to do this, tell his retirement in March of 2012, because it segues away. In August of this year, Police Tim Altamari pulled Captain Fleming from retirement and appointed him as the Anaronda County Police Chiefs, Police Department's first African-American deputy chief. I think it's important that the dedication to service allows someone to leave and be called back because it's truly what you love to do. So we're going to give the deputy chief an opportunity now to talk about acceptable use of force in situations and excessive force definitions. Deputy Chief?
Thank you.[934.18][934.18](applause). Good evening, everyone. As police use of force is one of the really truly hot topics across the nation right now, that's why I'm addressing that specific subject. It's hard to see what's up. I want to do a quick review of our use of force policy, and part of that was going to be the Pewser Early Warning System that Chief already took from here.
Stole us on it.
All right. And we have just excerpts from our use of force policy because it was too much to try and put on the screen. Number three, please. Part of our use of force policy says, "Police officers may use only that amount of force that is necessary to control an incident, to make an arrest, or to protect themselves or others from harm or death as may be necessary to take a prisoner into custody." And two real quick things with that. One, it doesn't mean that the officer has to stand there and go toe-to-toe. We don't stand there and box with someone until someone gets knocked out. Our intent is to take them into custody, so we have to step up. If someone is swinging at you or something like that, you have to use a level of force above that so that you can take them into custody and get the incident over as quickly as possible. Secondly, that means that once the incident is over, once that person and the incident is under control, handcuffed and under control, it stops right there. There are no more punches thrown, there's no more kicks thrown, there's no street justice doled out or anything like that. So that, in essence, that wraps up the definition of excessive force. Again, anything that goes beyond what is required to take that incident, to get that incident under control or take that subject into custody. In making an arrest, officers should always consider the enormity of the crime and the character of resistance, and use only such force as may be necessary. Sort of self-explanatory, we'll move on. One of the things that we've begun, just like many other nations, departments across the nation, is to begin teaching de-escalation. And that, especially with the increase of mental health issues, that is a very important aspect of use of force in police work. So with de-escalation, if time and circumstances permit, you use verbal advisements, warnings, percussion, and you slow down the situation if you can to try and come up with what other resources you can use. And just a quick example, if you get a call for a domestic or suicidal situation where you go to the house, the teenager has a knife, he runs into the bedroom, locks the door. Police over the years would have kicked the door in if we have to, go in, do what we have to do to take him into custody. Now we step back, give it some thought. Okay, is he a harm to anyone, is there anyone else in the room? Does he present a danger to anyone else other than himself? And if so, what is that danger? And then just decide what other resources you can bring in and use to help resolve that situation. That has done a great deal, that's just one example, of course, but in trying to reduce the number of uses of forces that you have. Because again, it's, let's see what else we can do, and especially let time and conversation work to try and get that person out, you know, as opposed to going in and using the force to get it over right away. So that's definitely one of the changes in tactics over the years. An officer may use deadly force only when human life is at risk, including the officer's, or to prevent escape of a fleeing, I'm sorry, excuse me, suspect fleeing from a felony of violence if the officer believes there is an immediate threat to human life. That one is one of those that's very, very rarely used, and of course, if you, that officer takes that step on deadly force and, you know, shoots at that fleeing felon, he has to justify that. There's, it's not, and it has to be only the facts that were known to the officer at the time. Can't take into account other circumstances that you may learn about later. Just a real quick of our use of force statistics in the police department. One, we have a use of force report. Anytime an officer uses force, he has to do a report. That report goes to the sergeant, then the lieutenant, then the captain, and then the major. All of those have to review that, decide whether that use of force report was within or without a policy, and then as it gets higher up, the chain, you also consider, do we need to change policy? Do we need to get additional equipment or different equipment? And those types of things are taken into account. The next one.
Say again?
The next slide was a use of force, some of our numbers over the years from 2009 to 2014. 2015 numbers aren't in yet. As I said, those reports have to go through the entire chain of command, so with that, all the reports aren't in, so we don't have those numbers yet. But 2014, we had a total of 197 use of force reports submitted. However, that was only 141 incidents. So in other words, on at least 56 of those, there were two or more officers that ended up using force on one incident. Could have been more than one person, but two or more officers submitted forms on it because every officer's required to. If he and I go and we get into a fight with a suspect, not only he has to put the report in, but I have to submit one as well. And if you look at our...
Can I jump in?
Certainly.
So, folks, if you think about that number, give me the number again, chief.
It was 141 incidents, 197 uses of force.
141 incidents out of 400 and some thousand that the Anaronda County Police Department engaged folks with at some level in that year. 146 out of over 400,000.
Okay. And the other parts of that is in 2014, our police department made 14,578 arrests. And even taking the high number of 197, that comes to only 1.35% of the time that we use force on our arrests. It's a pretty good statistic for us. That is the chart, just showing the uses of force, and as you can see, hands and feet were the primary weapon that the officers used. Tasers, there were 39 uses, and firearms, only four. Accountability, as I've indicated, the use of force report has to go up the entire chain. After the major signs on it, it then goes over to the inspections section, which falls under the Professional Standards slash Internal Affairs, and they answer directly to the chief. So in addition to that major having reviewed it, the inspection section, they review it, make sure that, again, they review it to make sure everything was in policy, and then it's also, again, considered, do we need to change policy? Do we, or anything else we may need to do if something wasn't quite right or wasn't acceptable. And lastly, that was just the police department's organizational chart, and I'm only showing that, and the last one was a deadly force review board. Anytime we have an officer use deadly force, there's an entire review board that has to be in addition to the review by the state's attorney's office, but we have an in-house board that reviews it. Can't see what those members that are up there. And they also recommend, make recommendations as far as change in policy or whatever else may need to be done. And that's...
We're just talking about Ms. Avola being in. Ms. Avola, would you stand up a minute? I'm going to throw you under the bus. I can't see where you are out there. Oh, sorry.
Yes.
So Ms. Avola sits on every one of those shooting review boards as a member of the deadly force review board, so she helps us keep in mind the citizen's viewpoint of things. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm done. Thank you.[1419.33][1419.33](laughing).
All right, thank you, chief. Let's give him a hand, please.[1428.14][1428.14](applause). So as we segue to the next speaker, I hope that you, again, when I talked about education between the two parties, when you hear a number like 146,000 from 400,000, that's one of those ah-hahs that make you process the daunting task that these folks, ladies and gentlemen out there every day, have before them. So the minor things that we do get an opportunity to hear about through social media, just give us a snapshot. So we don't want to rush through this because we want to get out to the audience to hear from you, but I want you to take note, either written or mental, when you hear things like that, so we can come back as we try to move forward with how we move forward with this conversation. So our next speaker, next panel member, is Bishop Eric Wright, Sr. Growing up in the church, Bishop Wright was always drawn to leadership positions, mainly pastor. Throughout his young years, Bishop Wright held various leadership roles within the church, such as president of the youth usher board, some of us say ursher board, certified by Anaronda County, youth choir director, and pastors' aid and committee. As Bishop grew older, he began to stray away from his calling that was placed for his life, until one day, God sent a pastor to his front door in the form of insurance salesman. He asked Pastor Wright if he and his family would like to come visit his church, and from that moment on, Bishop Wright became a faithful member of New Creations Deliverance Ministries. Pastor Wright attended Alpha Bible Institute, where he received several degrees. Pastor Wright was chief armor bearer for pastor as well as a praise and worship leader. During his time there, he was also ordained as a minister and later became the youth pastor. I present to some and give to others community experiences. He's going to talk about community experience with Anaronda County Police Department as it relates to him being a minister. Let's give him a round of applause.[1548.64][1548.64](applause).
Thank you so much. Good evening to everyone, and Happy New Year. I, I, I can say as a faith-based leader that our responsibility or our charge then, now, especially, you know, as been said already, by the, in the wake of everything that's happened over this past year with police and community relations and things of that nature, we've partnered greatly, I can say, with the Anaronda County Police as it pertains to community action, as it pertains to community involvement and bridging the gap. And I love using that term often, that we bridge the gap, the faith-based, the faith-based community and the police department, that we've bridged the gap over this year. We've done some major, some wonderful major events that, that has really let the people in the community see the versatility of the police department by them taking off their uniform and putting on a different uniform and wearing a different hat. It shows the versatility of the police department. I believe that as a faith-based leader, as a community leader, as a pastor, as a father, as a husband, we serve as a partition, if you would, between the people that we serve, our parishioners, and the police department. It was about six months ago, at 1:00 in the morning, I received an email from another pastor stating an issue in one of our communities, and that we, they would need our help to come out and to, and to help the police to, to, to not do their job, but to help them in taking down the stereotype of police and community relations. As you know, like I said, it's been stated that a lot of things have happened with the, with the police in the, in the community, going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and I believe that through the chief and the deputy chief, having the heart of the community first, to, to have the faith-based community come in and help, to stand in as a partition, I think it has helped the community get a better understanding of the police and their job and what they're there to do, and that's to protect and to serve. Also, it holds both parties accountable. It holds the police department accountable and responsible, but it also holds the community and her citizens accountable as well. So not only is it, no one's pointing the finger, at the same time, the same fingers that are being pointed are the same fingers being pointed back that says what was done to make this event or make this incident escalate to where it is. And so I think both parties were then introduced to one another in a very great way so that a dialogue can continue, or a dialogue can, now that it's started, can continue. And so now we've done some great things in the community. Our deputy chief, he's done a great job by supporting the clergy and the faith-based community and partnering, he and Captain Gilbert, doing a great job with partnering with us. We've done two basketball games in the community. We're looking to do a whole lot more in the community and taking it to various communities. I know two communities that stand out right off the top of my head are the Meavillis Community and the Freetown Community, and we're doing some great things there. The faith-based, faith-based community and the police department partnering together to make change. So I believe that our job as faith-based leaders and things is not to, not to throw a blanket or to give praise to either side, but to stand as a partition between the two and to mediate and to moderate the accountability of both sides so that both sides can be held accountable to do what they're supposed to do. a blanket or to give praise to either side, but to stand as a partition between the two and to mediate and to moderate the accountability of both sides, so that both sides can be held accountable to do what they're supposed to do, with the police is to protect and to serve the citizens of our community. So I think honestly and truly, it's our job as faith-based leaders to continue to promote that positive relationship between the police and the citizens in which we pastor, the citizens in which are in the radius of our churches, or people that we see all the time. It's our job to just be that partition that stands in between both sides and bring together peace instead of confusion, to bring together unity and love instead of, so that Anarundel County does not become what we've seen on TV, that Anarundel County can become a model and not another statistic.
Amen. Thank you, pastor. Thank you. So as we transition to our next speaker, pastor, I do know we're going to have some good questions for you. Our next speaker or panelist is going to be Reverend Stephen Tolet. I'm going to ask him to make his way up to the podium for me as I read his bio. So Reverend Tolet sent me a note. He was a little delayed this evening from traffic. So as he makes his way up, he received his BA from the School of Government and Public Administration at the American University, and attended Howard University School of Divinity and received his Master of Divinity. Pastor Tolet was commissioned as a United States Air Force Chaplain in the National Guard in December 1996, and has served as a pastor of United, Broadneck United Methodist Church. I'm sorry. Let me, let me back up here a sec. The light here is terrible. I've been moved here. He has served as the pastor of First United Methodist Church, Bradbury Heights in Washington, DC, and the pastor of Petworth United Methodist Church in Washington, DC. In July of 2004, Reverend Tolet was appointed as the pastor of Asbury United Methodist Broadneck Church in Annapolis, my home church. During his tenure, he has served as a president of the Annapolis International Ministries Alliance, also known as AMA, and is now the Anarundel County President of the NAACP. Reverend Tolet, give him a hand, please. He's going to be discussing community experience as it relates to Anarundel County Police Department.
Well, good evening.
You got to try it again, pastor.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here again to participate in the second of the four forums that we have planned to address community and police relations. And the first apologies for my being late. I got caught up in work at the church, and I looked up and it was 6:50, so. I do not view the police as our adversaries. I've used them as our, I view them as our partners. I understand that there are times to collaborate and cooperate, and there are times to confront. We will fulfill either role whenever it is necessary and appropriate. Thus far, we've been able to work together cooperatively, some of the things that Bishop Wright has referred to in the Mead Village community. We did that together. It was the deputy chief sent me, I don't remember whether it was a text or an email, but I got it in the middle of the night, as it seemed as though things were perhaps getting ready to get set off in a negative direction. And so I reached out to my email list and contacted pastors in my sort of dual hat capacity. And within a day or two, we had a gathering of pastors, meeting with police, and working in partnership to try and, and change the tenor and the tone in that community to, again, as Bishop Wright said, to avoid becoming a hotspot that you see on, on television where something has gone horribly wrong. Another area where we have worked cooperatively and folks haven't seen it, see, a lot of times we're doing things and folks don't see it because we pick up the phone and we call each other, we have a human conversation, nobody's calling names, nobody's making accusations. We're trying to troubleshoot and work things out. And the situation where on the first day of school there were some racist comments posted on the blackboard at, is it Magathie Village? Magathie?
Magathie Middle.
Magathie Middle, Magathie Middle School. And so there are people in the community who would say, we haven't heard anything, and they're not doing anything. And it's like, no, it takes time. And what was happening, in fact, was a very detailed investigation performed by the police in partnership with the state's attorney, using the electronic means that are available to them, having to deal with essentially some constitutional issues of free speech and, and whatnot, to eventually drill down and get to the likely sources or the proximate sources of the posts, but not able to determine with absolute accuracy an individual or individuals who did it. And they apparently have gotten a hold of the lighting here. But this is on, so I'll keep talking.
You're good.
And, but the thing is that the folks who probably did it know that we know where they live and who they are, and would be a lot less likely to do something like that again. And so, again, working cooperatively. And then after I had an opportunity to have a conversation with the chief and his staff and the state's attorney, that we agreed on a statement that we would put out jointly to inform the community of the work that had been done, the results that had been accomplished. Probably some concerns that no one's being, quote, punished, per se, but there are some limitations, legal limitations, to what could be done as far as the law is concerned. But what could be done has been done. Folks have been put on notice, and ideally, that kind of thing won't happen again. I know there's been some email traffic among some of my colleagues who are active with the Caucus of African-American Leaders. And one of their concerns, and rightly so, has to do with the environment within the schools and the fact that there needs to be more diversity and cultural sensitivity. And that is correct. I don't think that the lack of diversity and cultural sensitivity created the motivation in this person or these person's minds to do what they did. But that's a separate issue. Those are on separate tracks. But I do, you know, I, I will, as I told chief before, if, if you're wrong, I'm coming for you, but if you're right, I got you. And so I need to affirm what the police did and what the state's attorney did in that particular instance. So again, we look to work cooperatively as often as we can, because we're, we're in this thing together.
That's right.
And, and people need to understand that. You know, the police are human beings, and there going to be some, they're good folk and bad folk wherever you go. Good folk and bad folk in the church, am I right?
That's right.
All right? Good folk and bad folks wherever you go. And so you want to, to lift up and work with the good folk and try and deal with, or in the instance of their police or preachers, we want to remove them from that assignment so that they can do more harm, do no more harm. And I think that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there'll be some questions. Our next panelist is Mr. Carl C. Brooks. Carl Brooks was born and raised in Anarundel County, living in the Cedar Morris Hill community in Glen Burnie for 72 years. Carl graduated from Wiley H. Bates High School in Annapolis in 1961. In 1963, he married and started his family. In 1998, he retired with 33 years of service with General Motors. Being the father of five inspired him to become more involved in his community. After being a member of the Cedar Morris Hill Improvement Association for many years, he joined their Board of Directors, serving as their president and vice president from 1973 to 1981. Carl was re-elected as president in 2002 for two consecutive terms. In 1967, Carl joined the Northern District Police Relations Council. He maintained a seat on the board until he was elected president in 2001. He still serves at that capacity today. Carl is going to talk about opportunities for the community to collaborate with the police and build better relationships. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
One of the things, and one of the things I just learned about, it couldn't have been a more, first of all, let me tell you what the PCRC is. It's the Police Community Relations Council, which is a liaison between the community and the police department. And I joined that and started that 50 years ago. In fact, we are going to have a gala in about two months, it'll be in March, and we're going to celebrate the 50 years. And as of now, and I think I'm one, I'm the only or two original members, so I'm an old guy, and don't mind saying so. One of the things I learned at a meeting was that there was a problem in Annapolis, and it was having drug dealers, and I saw it, and I pointed out, but I couldn't get anyone to do anything about it. So when I went to the chief of police and then the county executive, and they still hadn't moved it right, he said, all right, Carl, here's what I'll do. I'll have someone come and set on it. What I just learned, and this is back in the 90s, what I just learned about three months ago, one of those officers that spent the night on the roof looking at the drug dealers was today our chief of police. And I just learned that. But we got results, and it was done. And those are the type of things that need to be done. We've had several arrests in Northern District, more so, I think, than any other district. The problem we run into from time to time is that if it wasn't for me collaborating with the police, most of my citizens or most of the community people, a lot of times, wouldn't know or wouldn't get the truth. You know how it is when something happened? The thing that took place was back in, going in the late 60s or early 70s. The young white woman was, they said raped by two black guys. But really what happened, the narcotics people and I worked hand in hand. Most of the narcotics people, most of you wouldn't see or wouldn't even know. When it comes to Northern District, or even some other districts, I know them, we work hand in hand, and they trust me, and I trust them. And most of the time, the information we deal with, we let no one else know. And the reason why I did that was because I went to a board meeting one night, and I said, they're selling drugs in this particular house. You know, I, one of the board members had to tell someone in the house that they were selling drugs and not to do anything else because Carl Brooks has turned the police on you, and they're looking at you. So I went back to the narcotics people, and I told them, we can't do that anymore. He said, why, Mr. Brooks? I said, because I have someone on that board who's not being reliable. I said, what we need to do is keep it between the three of us, and that's what we did. Now, getting back to the, the young white woman that was, they said was raped, come to find out, narcotics people investigated it thoroughly. It happened in Brooklyn Park off of Hammonds Lane. She was selling drugs with another guy, and they got into a hassle. And that's what goes on sometimes. People would jump right on it, and they said, oh, the two young black guys, they didn't rape the white woman. But that wasn't what happened. No, not really. There was sex involved, but because they had drug deals. And until you find that out, I appreciated that most of the citizens wouldn't jump off or run off in the wrong direction, seeing something and say, this is what happened, and, and we need to do something about it because they have done this. Just to show you how it works, I don't know if it's sure if the Anarundel County Police Department knew this. Well, I wasn't aware of it, and I just started thinking about it tonight. You remember the Civil Rights Movement started back in the early 60s? Well, that was my era, when I started moving on and getting into things. Well, you know, right after that, in the 60s, 70s, the police, the Anarundel County people, long before most of them up here got involved, probably some before anybody, some of you out there that's even born, they informed the communities, we are forming a PCRC, and we need a person from your community to come out and get involved, and I'll volunteer for that. Now, whether they knew way down the line that we're going to have a problem, I don't know. But I know one thing, I'm glad I got involved, I'm glad I could be the one in between to bring the information back. And this goes on over and over, and after all these years of doing this, I really feel good about it. And the chief will tell you. If the chief says something wrong, and he's not the first chief I've confronted, go all the way back years ago, and I've always been this type of person. If you're wrong, then I'm going to say something. If you're right, then we can come together and we can resolve this problem. And I have talked to many a chief that I thought maybe, hey, we got to do something about it. I didn't think that was right. Here, what we need to do. And we've had that problem with several people. But as it stands today, we are working hand in hand. I don't know whether you're aware of it or not, but when you belong to the Police Community Relations Council, right up front, you get the good information, you get involved, the officer's going to answer your questions. Do you know right now, and I don't know what the rest of the police departments are doing, as you know, the state has a commission, and if you saw the headlines, they had it in the paper about the new rules, new regulations? Well, I can tell you right now, after 50 years of being involved with them, most of them will not apply to Anarundel County Police. Now, I don't know about the other police departments in the state of Maryland, but most of them will not apply to Anarundel County, because they already do what they're supposed to do. And that's one of the reasons why I feel so good about being a part of what they do. So with this, I'd like to say the first chance you get, which you, if you in the Northern, if you in the Northern District, you can join my Police Community Relations Council when I'm president. And if you in the Western District, where we are setting today, then the last gentleman on the right is Rusty, and that's in his district. So please go out and join one and be a part of what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We appreciate it. As the shy one of the group, I always love to hear from you. All right. Our next speaker, he kind of gave us a little segue to, is Mr. Rusty Bristow, who's also going to talk about opportunities for community collaboration with the police, but he's going to speak from it from a Western District relations. After volunteering for many years with the Western District Police Community Relations Council, Mr. Rusty Bristow was elected president last year. He also serves on the Harmon Civic Association's Board of Directors and is a chairman of the Rundle Mills Task Force and is a co-chairman of the Local Development Council. For a number of years, Rusty coordinated the Fireman's Appreciation Day at Station 21 at Harmon Dorsey's Fire Department. Mr. Bristow is a veteran and a businessman, and is a community activist who works in many civic and political leaders to enhance the security and well-being of the citizens of Anarundel County. Let's give Mr. Rusty Bristow a round of applause.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Currently serving my second chair as president of the Western District Police Community Relations Council. The sole purpose of the PCRC is to promote better closure and more effective relations between the police and the community. Our mission is to promote the relationships, understanding, necessary to achieve common goals of the maintenance of law and order, the reduction of crime, and the protection of the community. We hold regular meetings at the Western District Headquarters in Odington. Our meetings are open to all citizens, members and non-members alike. In this venue, we can meet in a friendly environment, discuss the issues of the day. The Western District PCRC meets the second Wednesday of every month, except July and August, at 7:30 in the evening. Western District Commander, Ms. Katie, Captain Katie Goodwin, presents the monthly report to recent, of recent crimes and other activities. Our meetings provide an excellent opportunity for the police to clarify local law enforcement policies and for the public to ask questions and get immediate responses. We frequently have guest speakers from the law enforcement community who describe their duties, achievements, and problems of his or her particular unit. We have recently had speakers on traffic issues, domestic violence, emergency response preparations, missing persons, and drug issues. The PCRC periodically sponsors group tours to the 911 Center and of the Western District Headquarters Building, as well as demonstrations of SWAT team and a K-9 unit. We also encourage our members to participate in the ride-along program, which provides an opportunity for citizens to accompany a police officer on his duties and get an intimate look at the officer in action. The PCR sends representatives to various public events, including county open house events, community events, national night out events. We host a shred-rama annually, where citizens have the opportunity to shred personal papers in a convenient, secure, and economical way for free. Each spring, the PCRC holds an Officer Merit Award Ceremony to hold, to honor the select police officers who have distinguished themselves during the year. We also host a holiday buffet every December, and this year was our 24th year, where we demonstrate our appreciation for the services and sacrifices that our police officers and their families make for us every day. And as Carl mentioned, we are having our 50th anniversary, which, for the PCRC, which actually was, I believe, in November, but things happened, and we are going to celebrate it March 9th. And there'll be a lot more information coming out about that. Members of the PCRC have great advantages and opportunities. They receive alert messages from law enforcement agencies whenever a serious incident- They receive alert messages from law enforcement agencies whenever a serious incident has occurred. By attending PCRC meetings, members have the ear of the police. They get to know their local police officers and the police get to know them. This interaction provides both the citizens and police officers a better mutual understanding and a greater appreciation of the issues and concerns on a daily basis. Participating in the PCRC is an excellent way for the community to collaborate with police and hold and also build relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll receive both of you as invitations and hopefully folks will come to you afterwards. Our last panelist is a good friend, Mr. Bascom Tally III, also known to some of us as Dit. Dit founded and has led corporate government consulting, Washington DC-based consulting firm specializing in leadership and management development and organizational assessments. The firm maintains a list of both public and private sector and pays attention to changes in accountability in both sectors. For the past 10 years, Dit has taught at John Hopkins University School of Education with the Division of Public Safety Leadership, where he is now the senior staff member. In addition, he has taught at H. John Heinz Third School of Public Policy and Management at Carnegie Mellon University in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Mr. Dit will be speaking tonight about leadership training of law enforcement personnel through academic studies, history and present relationships between community and police in the United States. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much. I wanna go back to the very beginning where Chief Altamari started, when he talked about complaints and use that as a way of offering a snapshot or a perspective on why the issue of leadership training is important for law enforcement personnel. When the chief, the deputy chief or other members of the Command Staff Anaronda County Police Department deal with complaints, citizen complaints from people like yourselves and other citizens within the county, ask yourself, what are the issues that they're dealing with? What are the sources of those complaints? Overwhelmingly, the answer to that question has to do with things like communication skills, things like emotional intelligence, the ability to understand one's own emotions and to, ability to read and empathize with that of others. It's not the hard skills that they've been trained in the academy, they know those well. It's those interpersonal leadership skills that run afoul, that create the source of the problems. And so that's why the leadership training is so important, because it's where the rubber meets the road in terms of the issues and points of friction between the police departments and the communities. And that's why we work as hard as we do to focus on those issues, to create options for constructive solutions. And that's why it's an honor to be here tonight representing the division and the school to help you collaborate with your outstanding police department in addressing these issues constructively. You've heard much about the history and challenges of police community relations across the country. I'm not gonna give you any kind of a lecture about that now. You know full well, you read the papers, you watch the television, this is a particularly challenging time. We've been here before, but this is a particularly challenging time and that's why what you're doing in this county is so critically important. You have no guarantee of not being on the front page. You have no guarantee. What you have is the effort to establish, as the chief said, putting a deposit into the goodwill of public trust. And that's something you do, an event at a time, an act at a time, there are no magic wands. You do it in a meeting like this, a bit at a time, you hear people out, you respond with authenticity and integrity. It's an honor to be with you and to participate in collaborating and coming up with some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give them all a round of applause. Okay, so we've come to that portion of our program that I'm gonna deem the second half of why we here. So we got an opportunity now to hear from and somewhat be educated from the panelists. Now it's time for us to extend the opportunity to get to the second part of why we came. So I wanna kinda set the stage for how I'd like to see this go. We've done pretty well in the past. So just a couple of things I wanna highlight. So we're gonna give an opportunity for each person that wants to be heard from tonight. We're gonna give you two minutes, exactly two minutes to speak. And what'll happen is you'll see a card be held up at your one minute mark and then again at the 30 second mark. And when you see the red, that means that your time is up. What I'm gonna ask is that, remember, we're having a conversation this evening, so I'm gonna try to not have any speeches, if you will. Direct your question to whichever panelist you'd like. If you wanna just leave it general, let them figure out who should answer it, we'll be able to do that. Again, we're gonna capture what you say over on the wall. I've kinda grown into taking some liberty that sometimes based off of what you're saying, I'm gonna try to draw out a little bit more sometimes even. You may be talking about something that you're actually speaking a solution into the air and we're gonna try to capture that as best we can. So what I'm gonna do now is kinda, everybody just kinda take a deep breath, relax and let's continue the conversation. This is why we're actually here tonight. So I kinda threw this out last time, there's gonna be a pause when I stop talking, because nobody likes to be first. So I'm gonna kinda read you a little bit. If it looks like you're leaning, leaning and just won't commit, I might just come to you. So this is an opportunity, so I'm gonna ask you, just come on up, but I'm gonna ask you to kinda give us your name. Tell us where you're from, tell us what community you're from. We're recording tonight and we're also writing down. So it would be good to know what part of the county you come from, what community, and if you're part of an organization, let us know that. Because again, that helps us kind of identify maybe some things that these gentlemen across the county that have the organizations can kinda reach out and teach and learn as well. Sound like a plan?
Yes, sir.
Sound like a plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, let's try. So who's gonna be my first person? Let me hear from the community. Somebody break the ice for me. There we go, come on up, ma'am. Speak loud, give us your name, community, direct your question to who you'd like it to go to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Nicole Meadows and I am from Russet, in, right around, right down the road here. We have, I am a member of the Western District PCRC. I also sit on the Russet Homeowners Association Board of Directors. I started out as the Security Committee. I was a concerned homeowner that didn't like the way the neighborhood in Russet was trending. So I joined the Security Committee there at Russet, found out about the PCRC, joined that, helped Rusty this year with the holiday buffet and have been actively involved there as well. Decided to run for the board because I wanted to help effect change in Russet. And I have partnered with Captain Goodwin on many occasions and even had Chief Altamari out to address our homeowners as we have been battling the hotels on 198. And my question to the panel is, previously on 175, there were similar issues with those hotels back when Chief Fleming was Captain Fleming over here at Western. And I know that there are many things that were done with those hotels before they were all closed and have townhomes up now. But before that took place, there were many things that were done to work with those hotels to resolve some of those issues. And if you can think back to what happened then that we could maybe use in the 198 corridor hotels, the other concern that we have, aside from the crime going on in those hotels, is the families that are having to live there due to the lack of, you know, affordable housing. I also sit on the fundraising chairman for the PTA at Monarch Academy, so we care about those kids that are there and we don't want them having to be exposed to the crime and the other things that are going on. So if you can think back or I know about the MEED basketball game, MEED Village Basketball Games, anything that we can do on our side on 198 to try and help the situation with the hotels. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
So it's a great question. It's good to see you again. She forgot to give you a part of her bio. You wanna give him that? I know I pulled you out.
So full disclosure, my husband is an Anaronda County Police K-9 officer and has been for 15 years and some change. So I have a vested interest in making sure that he comes home safe every night and my dog.
Amen, amen.
Which in no way minimizes her right to get up here and ask the question she asked him. I just thought it was pretty cool to see her out here, that's all. So I think the first part of the question there for us as police leaders is that the truth of the matter relies in a kinda seminal thought and that's police can't do it by themselves, right? As you, as you look at a holistic problem solving model, any of them that get used nowadays, the police in a, in a community issue have to plug in as a part of it and be effective at their parts, have good communication across governmental lines and then also have good communication and empathy out into the community. So you, you're, you're talking about at the micro level, a problem that exists at the macro level across the country everywhere, you know? So we're not gonna fix it by putting handcuffs on the people we need to put handcuffs on, although we're doing that a lot down there, you know that. We talk about different strategies to look at improving the quality of life in these places, zoning, licensing. Councilman Pruski's here, I know he and my boss, Mr. Schuh, are working hard together on a holistic look at the law that helps bring more weight to bear on problem solving in here. And I think we look at all those things together, we look at those children and do a critical analysis on what action we take, what consequence that's gonna have for those children. So at the end of the day, where we wanna get to is a solution to the problem that raises the level of the facilities to a level that is acceptable to us as the community, so that we're not turning those kids out in the street, which is gonna make their lives even worse. And the sheer truth of it is, I wish Dr. Pam Brown was here, I don't think she's here tonight, but Dr. Pam Brown, who works with children all over the county, will tell you is that the only thing worse sometimes than the situation at hand is what's gonna happen if we shut down the situation at hand. So we have to be very careful in that. And as we move forward, the, the, the most important part of it is continuing this communication and not quitting. Because the solution's out there, we just gotta get enough smart brains thinking about it. And you know, I'm not smart enough, so it's gotta be somebody smarter than me. Did I answer your question okay?
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next question. Next question. You know, as I look at the number of people that are here, you could look at this two ways. There's places in the country where a county executive and a chief of police could have taken the initiative to do this and there'd be standing room only, there'd be people outside the door, which says to me that in those places, things have gotten to such a bad level that that's the turnout. So as I look, I see this right here as a good thing, because this allows us to be a little more intimate and give you an opportunity at a smaller level, more of a micro level, to be heard, to get an opportunity to ask that burning question. It could be as simple as something that you'd like to see different in your community. So this is your opportunity. So who's going to bring my next question? I'm watching you folks, I see you leaning, I'm coming to you, here we go. Okay, please keep everything in the form of a question and be mindful of two minutes. Thank you.
Name's Mike Mathia, I'm out of Beverly Beach in Southern District, member of Southern District PCRC, sit on the chief's advisory council. I run the Beverly Beach Community Neighborhood Watch, all right? My question is, due to the current staffing levels and funding of the county police department, and believe me, they do an excellent job with what they have, is there any chance that we can get more funding for them? I know we're raising the money to get a new academy going, they need that, that thing is really antiquated. We need more money to get this done. I don't care what you do in government, across the country, money is what makes the world go round. These guys are doing circles with the minimum amount of funding they have. They need more funding to do us a better job. They do an excellent job as what they do. Our stats for the police department's involvement with the community are excellent. The last meeting, they had the stats compared to the surrounding jurisdictions, we come out with a bunch of gold stars on that. So if we could just get some more funding, bring the levels up, give them the equipment and staffing and material they need to do a better job for us, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to note that I did not pay Mr. Mike to say that.
All right, next question.
Do you have a question?
All right, here we go.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps you wanna ask, have the county executive respond to that?
Yeah, thank you for, for raising that issue. Fair compensation is, is a very high priority for our administration, for public safety professionals and for all of our employees. Our announced strategy, and I intend to stick through it through my entire term, is to pay our public safety professionals incrementally more increases than other rank and file county employees, because I, I agree with Mr. Mike's thesis that our public safety professionals are underpaid in Anaronda County and that's a result of, of many, many years of, of smaller pay increases than should have been the case, but we were in a very constrained environment with the recession and, and other factors. So it's gonna take some time to wind out from the current situation, to wander away out of it. So to give you an example, the current budget year, the average rank and file county employee received a 2% increase, public safety received a 3% increase, so 50% more. It's still only 3%, I recognize that, but unfortunately, this job doesn't come with a printing press and we only have so much money in any given year to be able to give out the pay increases. So we're gonna do the best we can, I'm committed to it and I agree with the fundamental point that you're making, which is that we need to do a better job compensating our public safety professionals and, and they, those professionals have my commitment that whatever we can do to improve payroll for county employees, public safety will always be the very top of the list.
Thank you.
I would also like to note that if the county executive is a successful participant in the Powerball, he will have an additional billion dollars to contribute to, to the budget, so.
All right, sir.
And if the chief wins, he's out.
Okay, good evening, my name is Kirby McKenney. I worked in the mayor's office for the last nine years and part of my job at the mayor's office was dealing with nonprofits who provide the services to the community. One of my problems was with, with nonprofits, even though they receive money from, from the city, they never collaborated together to kinda fight what's going on. And I used to tell them, maybe if you came together, you could resolve things, but as long as you yourself created gaps, you cannot provide services that, that's gonna help the overall situation. I, I see my brother Reverend Tetelet, we happen to be brothers, that, I see the smile on his face, so I guess you guys are understanding where I'm coming from. How do you bring these organizations together along with yourselves to help, to help these communities out here that really need organizations that come under one umbrella? You wanna start?
Okay. As you were, as you were talking, he was saying, I think this question is for us.
I think it's our question.
It's our question. The first thing frankly, Kirby, is we have to just acknowledge that everybody's busy and already has a certain amount of things on their plate that they are doing. And so there needs to be enough education or just sort of the aha moment or the come to Jesus moment that, but you know what? If more of us work together and are rowing in the same direction, as opposed to everybody's out in their little rowboat, why don't we get in the big boat and row together?
Exactly.
That, that would make a difference. And so frankly, it's a matter of folks being less vested or invested in self-interest and more and more invested in community interest, less invested in Asbury-Broadneck United Methodist Church, and more invested in the ministerial alliance, because, you know, many hands make light work. So, it's frankly a culture change to get people to shift from doing what they know, what they're comfortable with, what they're familiar with, and branching out in a way that you might lose some control, but that's okay. You know, compromise means you're not going to get, you'll get some of what you want, but you won't get everything that you want, and that's okay. But get with some other folks and compromise and work together.
I think that we've seen, as a faith-based community, in 2015, that we have to kind of set our denomination or whatever differences aside, and I think that we kind of owe that to, well, first of all, we owe it to God, but then secondly, I think we owe it to the police department, because honest and truly, when we came together, for example, in Me Village, there were a lot of different pastors and a lot of different quote-unquote denominations that came together under one umbrella to see change happen. Whether that change was, whether it was big or small, it was a windfall for not only the police department, it was a windfall for the faith-based community. Why? Because the police department, for that small moment, you know, whatever it is, for lack of better terms, maybe the bottom had fell out for just a moment, and they said, well, look, you know, locking him up, what is that going to do? So, now we have another problem. So, now let's go and try to get, like I said before, a partition, let's get somebody to go between, nine times out of ten, these people's, Ray Ray's mother goes to one of our churches. So, let's go get Ray Ray's pastor, mom's pastor, to see if we can try to bring him in, to kind of talk to Ray Ray, to kind of calm him down a little bit. So, I think that honestly and truly, and I just had a meeting today, I just said this, that I think honestly and truly, the bottom has to fall off for the church, for us to realize that honestly and truly, together we can do more. And I'm even teaching that this year in my church, that teamwork makes the dream work. And I believe that in order to make the dream work in the community, there has to be teamwork. We can do a lot, with your hand like this, you can only do a lot, but with your fist balled up, we could do a whole lot. So, I think that the police has kind of given us the blueprint of what we should carry over into even our different sanctuaries, and that honestly and truly, while we're talking about God being the head coach, so to speak, I never, ever, ever seen Joe Flacco take the ball out of his running back's hand and run the opposite direction, but they go in the same direction. And I think honestly and truly, if the faith-based community, if we would stop coming together and having lunch, and pretty much getting together and having bragging sessions about what I'm doing over here, instead of us having bragging sessions, but coming together and saying, how can we sit down at a table of brotherhood and combine our resources to make our communities better, I think we'd be better people.
I would also note that when the deputy chief reached out, it was, I won't say it was a sign of desperation, but certainly grave concern.
Right.
That, Rev, we need some help, and if we don't get it, some really, really bad stuff could happen. And so, we were kind of the partition, if you will, just walking in between, so we were out there with the police, and then just kind of walking around on our own some, engaging and interacting with people, to try and lower the volume, bring the temperature down, and then create an environment where we could actually have some discussion and conversation and get to know each other. I know the basketball games are part of that strategy, just to humanize a little bit.
Right.
But the other thing, frankly, is that this is a long haul.
Right.
And so, you can't have folks show up for 15 minutes, because a lot of nonprofits are very good at responding to the crisis of the moment.
Exactly.
And then they go back to what they know.
Business as usual.
We need to shift, learn how to shift the paradigm, and say, okay, well, what systemic change can we bring about that will have a positive result in the long haul?
Thank you. Thank you. Great question. So, pastors, as the next speaker, question, person comes up, something to both of you, now might be a good time just to quickly, you know, we've done the Houses of Worship, we had 80 churches come together. When there was an active shooter issue, we turned that into something where 80 churches came together. Prior to that, you have the race relations going on in Annapolis throughout the county, how many churches make up that?
Forty.
Forty-some, so I think earlier we said something about communication and things happening quietly, but them not getting out. This is an opportunity for folks to hear that things are going on, we've just got to plug into the right things. And a lot of times, we don't pay attention to things until they knock on our door or our neighbor's door, and we believe that they're actually going to directly affect us. So, I think that's what you guys are driving to, that we have to pick the right topics and put that energy into those things and drive it until it's fixed.
Rather than react.
Correct, which is what we're doing tonight, so.
I mean, we have to, people have to be, I think that, you know, the good thing about this whole thing is, and I'll be honest with you, I probably wouldn't be sitting on this stage if it wasn't for Deputy Chief and Pastor Tetelet. I mean, Pastor Tetelet could have went ahead and took matters into his own hand, been the NAACP president, but for me to get the email, and it really just moved me into action to just say, well, you know, what can I do? And the good thing about it is, Chief did it when he smelled smoke, not when he seen fire. So, I mean, you know, we came in ready to fight backdraft, but he smelled smoke, but we came in prepared for the worst, but in all honesty, it all turned out for the best.
Correct, correct. Thank you, thank you. Ma'am, please.
Excuse me, I wrote it down because I don't really like speaking.
You can direct all your questions to the chief.
Okay, so I'm going to circle back around to 198. I'm a resident, my name is Alveda Bush, and I'm a resident of Russett, and I wanted to know what is happening or not happening that makes the hotels on 198 appealing to crime activity? Like, is it the location, because they can get on and off the parkway, or is it lack of visible security? But I know the police are there, because they hang out right down below Motel 6, so I know the officers are there, so what makes it appealing? I've been a resident of the 198 corridor since 1995. I used to be in Maryland City, now I'm in Russett, and I remember years ago, there was like a prostitution problem at one of the hotels. It was cleaned up, but they came right back. So, what's happening that makes that section appealing?
That's a great question. Thank you, ma'am. Well, you want to talk about that? So, I think it's multifaceted. One, you know, we say the price point at the hotels is low, right, comparatively speaking. And when we say that, it's kind of a misnomer, because the folks who are living there long term are still paying $1,500 a month to live there, but they are able to get in there, it might be folks who, the decent folks, who are socio-economically challenged, maybe have some credit hits, maybe can't get something going on a traditional lease situation, there are, a lot of the ladies are fleeing problems in homes, so the folks who are over there because they don't have any place else to go, it's a price point thing, is because they can get by week after week making their payments at the levels that they can afford and still feed their children. And I'll go back, I'll circle back around to those children a minute. And when you talk to Dr. Pam Brown, she literally gets so angry that these kids are sitting in situations like this, that she can't speak for a minute, but then she comes back to reality and says, but when I get something done to kick these kids out of there, they're on the street then, and that's even worse. So, it's a complex problem. So, that's one, right? The other side of it is the folks that we don't want there, the drug dealers, the human traffickers, the poor girls that they're victimizing, they are over there in those hotels too. And where you have drug dealers and product, you have guns, and where you have guns, you have violence. And that's why the cops are always there, because we know if we don't have a constant presence over there, when you have drugs and drug dealers, and they're in the same, they're in close proximity to each other, you're going to have violence, because they stake out territory and they repel rival drug dealers with violence. So, we go in there day after day, night after night, week after week, and the cops are hunting. And they're hunting in a good way, they're hunting to keep people safe.
I would choose another word besides hunting in this environment, I'm just suggesting.
I don't disagree with you. They are turnover rocks.
Okay.
Better. They're looking for the problems before the problems become violence. They're fishing. So, day after day, night after night, those drug dealers are coming, because drug dealers go where they can set up shop, where users are close, and where they can pay as little of their profit margin as possible for overhead, right? So, that's why they're there. That's why I talked about this needing a holistic approach. The cops cannot solve the problems that society finds itself in nowadays by themselves. We're back to a macro-level problem, this happens everywhere, and we have a situation where society's challenges bubble to the surface, and we've all got to put our heads and hearts together to solve the problem. And ma'am, I got to be honest with you, I don't think it's going to get solved in three or six months. And then you go through the end result in problem solving, and if we shut these places down and shutter them up, there's a whole new set of problems that are coming. So, we've got to do this thoughtfully and smart, and come to a problem that gets the results we want in buoying the clientele up versus creating vacant buildings for people to break in, break stuff up, and do a whole new host of bad things, if that makes sense. I know I probably didn't give you a concrete answer, ma'am, but I hope I at least got halfway. Do you want to add anything?
I have a question, even with that, it's concerned, chief, but what, and I just whispered to Reverend Tetelet that honestly and truly, through the early 90s, and I'll just be frank now, it ain't going to hurt me now, I'm good now. But through the early...
Statute of limitations?
I'm good, no, I'm good. I checked all that before I left home. But the good thing about it, well, that's the good thing about it, but the hotels and things that you, the motels and things that you're referring to, you know, I was one of those ones who set up shop there in the early 90s, and, you know, I knew that, you know, because it was, it was quick, it was cheap, it was affordable, and things of that nature. My question is then, when do we, when do we hold management accountable? I know that they're trying to get, you know, they're trying to book rooms and all that kind of stuff, but when do we hold management accountable to, now, I know for me, I was too young to get a room, so of course, I paid somebody a cheap little $25, or gave them a hit for free to go get my room, so that I could set up shop and do what I need to do, whether it was going to be for the weekend, or whether it was going to be for a week, or a couple of days, or what have you. And yeah, we had everything running through there, from women to everything, everything was going through there. The fact of the matter is, though, I think that if management is held to some level of accountability to do, just like what we're doing in our communities, doing that community policing, that, no, you don't want to turn away the money, but, you know, I was always told, all money is not good money. And even if, you know, that means that, you know, yeah, you turn away somebody who's going to give you a week's whatever to stay there, but they're not doing things that are promoting a decent environment. Yeah, that may be on that particular strip, and I know that there's another hotel across the street, it's called Red Crown or Red Carpet or something like that, they had Night End up the Street, I know those were our three biggest, you know, but on that strip, that, you know, you, we have to maybe try to hold accountable the management. How would police enforcement hold the management accountable? That, I know, like I said, I know they want to make the money, because that's how they, you know, but how do we hold the management accountable to understand, if you got the same guy coming back the same time, all the time, because one thing I know about drug dealers is, drug dealers, because I was one of them, we tend to get a little stupid and clumsy. That's how you guys are easy to pick us up, because, well, pick them up, no longer am I putting myself in that category. But they get a little clumsy, especially when they start making good money. It's obvious that these guys are making penny money if they keep coming back to the same place setting with the same shop. I know when we started making money, we moved, because it was called then, this place is getting hot. We got to move now, because a couple of dudes got busted around the corner.
It's still called just getting hot.
It's getting hot. So, how do we hold, my question is then, how do we hold the management of these particular establishments accountable, to do some kind of screening, or some kind of, to make your job easy, but to also keep down those levels, so that these children involved in these situations don't see what they have to see?
So, it's tough. It's tough. The answer to your question is, that's tough, and there was a Supreme Court decision this year that made it even tougher.
Wow.
Because, you know, in Anarone County, we had a statute that required the hotels, when a cop came in, to, he had a suspicion something was going on, and he came in and said, I'd like to see a register, they had to show it to us. But the Supreme Court has ruled that unconstitutional. So, that's made that even, that part of it even tougher, right? And every day is a balance between people's privacy, interest, and the public safety interest in the United States, right? And that's the way it should be, truthfully. So, it's gotten tougher. So, we have in my career a couple of times been successful in going after somebody's house, right? Because we can prove, you're the owner of the house, you're doing dirt, time after time after time, and we need time after time after time. But when you have a business owner who's going after business, it becomes exponentially harder. And I'll tell you, as the Northern District Commander, Ryan, are you still here? Lieutenant Frazier was here earlier, he was my Drug and Problem Solving Sergeant, and we went after a hotel and we tried to take it. But the level that you need for that forfeiture, you're taking a huge valued property from somebody, and this is America, right? So, you got to, you got to get there to the nth degree, and we fell short at Northern State Attorney's Office, said, guys, you've put in great work, but we can't do it. So, so then, the trick becomes, we hold these owners accountable through a holistic approach, not just a police approach, right? And the councilman and the boss are working on that together to strengthen the regulatory ordinances, so that you can go in and you can say, guys, you're not listening, we're shutting you down. That's, I think, the goal for those who scoff at us.
And then you say, but then, in doing that, it creates a bigger problem, because now people are on the street.
It's definitely, and we got a vacant hotel.
Hotel, right.
Full of stuff to steal and places to crash.
Wow.
All right, thank you, guys. Ma'am, was that?
Wow.
Okay, okay. Do you have any ideas that maybe you can share afterwards, and maybe points, you know, points some folks in the right direction as you see them, and discuss afterwards if you like? Okay. Next question, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Sharon Delfino, I live in Seven Notes Community, right here in Odenton. I am the aunt of an 18-year-old black African male. He and his friends love to hang out in our community, and there's been a couple instances before he turned 18 where he was, it seemed like he was being profiled. I understand there's a balance with having police there in our community and keeping us safe. My question is to you, with the stuff that we've seen on television and the things that have been going on in our country lately, how do we get the police officers, actually, how do we get the young men's attitude or sense of resentment that they see, that's being built in what they see in the, on the news? When they do get like, in my case, my nephew was, I don't see how you can get pulled over from walking from one part of the community over to the end. I understand they may have been because they were looking for, the police was looking for someone that fit his profile. But my nephew is an honor roll student, and athlete, and so forth. But again, when we see the kind of things that's going on and how police is being treating these young men, how do, how, what's, you know, what can you all do? Because I feel like, it just feel, you know, it's just happening, and it feels like, what my worst fear is that he will get an attitude, he'll get, you know, he'll be really upset, and, you know, something will happen to him. He'll be one of those, and I don't want him to be one of those.
Two words come to mind, community policing. That if the police are invested enough in the community, and entrenched enough in the community, they would know who your nephew is, so that they would know, you know, that's, you know, that's John, we don't even have to stop him, because we know he's minding his business, he's a good kid, he goes to school, he's on honor roll, he's playing sports. And I remember a situation in the city of Annapolis, where we had a forum like this, and one of the members of the community came and talked about a police officer who had rolled, you know, made a turn onto a street, and there were some guys standing in the street, and he just drives by in his squad car and says, get the F out the street. Now, that's a case-in-point formula for building resentment, and then especially in that neighborhood where, you know, the neighborhood's had some issues, but on the other hand, there's nowhere for anybody else to... issues, but on the other hand, there's nowhere for anybody else to be. There's nowhere for anybody to be because a lot of the recreational facilities and venues have been closed and have become commercial sites, et cetera. But that, rather than that, you get out of your car, out of the squad car, you walk around and you meet people, you engage with people, and frankly, that helps your police work because once people learn to trust you, then if there's some things you need to know, you know, they're not going to stand out on their front porch and tell you, but they might text you and tell you. You know, they'll figure out a way to tell you so that then that will help you with your work to help strengthen and improve the neighborhood and the environment, the community policing.
And I couldn't agree with the pastor more. And I'm proud to say, in Anarono County, you know that old saying, put your money where your mouth is? We're putting our money where our mouth is, where our mouth is. There's, there's no win to be had saying there's never problems. There's problems. We're working very hard on educating our young cops about what Reverend Tillet just said. A, you catch more flies with honey than you do vinegar, right? B, community policing, when you break it down, is good old-fashioned beat cop policing, right? So you got a beat cop who knows Miss Sally on the corner is looking out that window every night and is going to know exactly what happened on that corner on a Friday night at, you know, 11:15, right before she goes to bed. So you know, Miss Sally, you know, where she fits into that puzzle of good policing, you know, who's out there doing dirt, you know John who's on the honor roll, whose mom, as soon as she finds out he's out there for more than five minutes, is running out to drag him in by his ear, you know what I mean? And you know Ray Ray, whose mom hadn't looked at him in three weeks. And you know the difference, you know? So you put all that stuff together, that's why we're doing ballgames in Mead Village. That's why we're pushing into free town in a positive way. When you talk about the last 20 years in policing, when the money dried up, so did the good things. What's easy for a police chief to do away with in 1996 when the money started drying up? Youth activity program, right? Policing Community Together units, the budget to spend on community outreach, all those things went away. So you have this drying up of good things. And then we have computers put in the car, and the cops start to learn that that computer drives their activity instead of this. And that's a bad thing. And we've got a youngest, a younger generation of cops who even the best of them is using that computer almost to the exclusion of everything else to get their job done. And we got good interactions going away, we got only showing up in communities, particularly communities of color, that are underserved in a positive manner. We got cops coming in for one reason, to put handcuffs on people and then leave. And so what happens? The trust gets eroded because that's the only thing they see. So we're working very hard, and I'm going to ask the chief, he don't like talking up here, but I'm going to ask him to talk to you a little bit about how we are putting our money where our mouth is on this. And we know what we've got to do to get back to an equilibrium of trust in the community.
Okay. I'll add to that to add one more, the big item in there is that communication. I don't know what the incident was with your nephew, we don't know if, you know, someone else called in to have them checked, or it might have been something else that happened, I don't know. But it's incumbent upon that police officer when he, you know, approaches. And some things, if it was an armed robbery, then of course you may not be able to tell him right away, you know, when you stop him, what you're stopping him for. But communication, and then as you go along, once you've checked him, make sure he is safe, he doesn't have the gun or whatever it was, then you have to explain, okay, I stopped you because we got a call for this, this and that. The officers have to explain, they have to have better communication with anyone that they deal with. Now, again, not knowing the circumstances, it's really hard to say in that one, but that is the key component in any of those situations is communications. Again, you might not be able to do it right away, but before the situation's over, you need to explain, the officers need to explain themselves and why they did what they did. And again, if he wasn't involved, one of the big things I used to do was just thank you for your cooperation.
And a handshake.
Yes.
There's nothing wrong with a, we encourage people to give a handshake at the end of an inter, man, I'm so sorry I inconvenienced you. This is what happened, have a great day, be safe, you know? Human interaction.
And I think also the biggest, the biggest, the biggest thing that, you know, messes up that relationship or that communication is the glorification of what the media has made, you know? We put, they, we put images, images have been put on TV, and, you know, when I was, when I, in the early 90s, when I was, when I was a teenager, Ice T had a song out called F the Police. So, I mean, whether it was, you know, and now it's stopped talking about the police is this and the police is that, and, you know, everybody that was African-American and teenager or of that millennial age or that millennial group, when the Freddie Gray situation happened, now everybody related to Freddie Gray all of a sudden. My thing is this, honestly and truly, if you put yourself in a good situation, if you put yourself in a situation that, you know, may cause someone to question, then, you know, I was always taught, and even my wife now, you know, it's not about what you say, it's how you say it, and it's the tone that's used when the conversation starts and ends. And if that conversation ends and starts a correct way, then I'll be honest with you, all of the deaths that we've seen, or all of the things that have happened, quote unquote, in 2015 or even before then, I don't think ever would have happened. I think Mike Brown, if he would have had a decent conversation with that cop, cop that had a decent conversation with him, we wouldn't even be sitting here having this conversation. I think a lot of things go different if we learn how to communicate. And that has nothing to do with, that's just everything to do with a human being and a human being. I don't think it goes far beyond, you treat people like you want to be treated. And so, you know, there's a question of, you know, because I think every, I'm not going to say every, but I have teenage boys, I have teenage sons, and honestly and truly, you know, if I were to yell out one of his name, the other was going to turn around and automatically think I'm talking to both of them, but I'm only talking to one. Every African-American kid now thinks when they see a cop car, they think, oh, he gonna pull me up. They already got in their mind, some of them already have in their mind, this is the right being Freddie Gray situation, what am I going to do? Because they want street credibility, they want to see, to see they're so big and bad. But honestly and truly, who's willing to die just to answer a question? Or who's willing to die just because you asked him, hey, man, you know, it's a little too late for you all to be out here? And then the confrontation starts. Well, who are you? Well, first of all, I'm the cop, and I'm just trying to get you off the street just in case something else transpires. I'm trying to protect you, you know? And then that's where the dialogue goes, and the dialogue goes to an argument, and then it goes to physical, and then now, you know, we're sitting up and we're having a press conference about, right, now the news is here, and some mama's on TV trying to get some money, but you don't understand, your son, your son, instead of responding the right way or responding, he reacted. And so now, the job has to be done. So I think that honestly and truly, with the forms like this and what honestly, what I can say for Anarono County, how the chief and everyone who's trying to bring and bridge that gap, and to be honest with you, the Police Athletic League and all those things that were before, I think that they, they've used the faith-based community, our influence to help bridge that gap. No, Mr. Shue, we do need a little more money. Now, I'm not going to say we don't, but, hey, at the end of the day, we are taking our influence and what little bit of resources we may have to come together to make a difference one community at a time. So, I mean...
One thing that I would point out, you know that there's a call around the country and even federal dollars coming to support it for body cams and dash cams for the police. And other than just a recording of what actually happened, either to support the officer's version, or to support the citizen's version, or whatever the gray area was in between. But the other thing that studies have shown is that when the officer knows that their interaction is being filmed, and the citizen knows the interaction is being filmed, that tends to lower the volume, and people tend to be a little more decent to each other because they know they're being filmed. And if that, even just that little sort of social...
Helps a little bit.
Yeah, helps a little bit, then so much the better. But now, one thing that you talked about with respect to responding negatively to an interaction, again, one of the things, the police cannot afford, you know, you guys are armed, you have the authority granted by the government to take people out. That's not the desire, but you have the authority. And so assumptions can cost people their lives. I just looked at the state of Ohio, two instances. John Crawford III in a Walmart on the cell phone with his fiancee. He had a gun, I forget what kind of gun, over his shoulder. He's on the phone. So whoever came in behind him, hollering, you know, drop to the floor or whatever, he didn't hear them because he was on the phone. And he got shot and killed. So now two young men have lost their father. To take that one step further, Walmart is, I believe, the number one gun seller in the country. So what was so remarkable about the fact that somebody had a gun over his shoulder, not menacing anybody, not pointing it around at anybody? So that police need to be very careful not to act on assumptions. Now, I know you got to keep yourself safe too because you want to come home to your wife at night. But if you're looking at the back of somebody's head, he's not a threat to you. And in the same way, and of course, Tamir Rice was a little chunky, well, you know, we have an obesity epidemic in America, there are a lot of chunky kids now. That if you took more than 2.5 seconds when you pulled your car up about three, six feet from the kid, not knowing who he is or what he's doing, but again, he's not threatening anybody, he's there by himself. Drop the gun, did you hear me? You know, just take a minute, he wasn't pointing anything at you. Don't assume that everybody is a bad actor. And just take a minute. Don't get yourself killed. But certainly if you're looking at the back of somebody's head, or nobody, the person does not have a weapon in their hand and pointed at you, that ought to buy a couple of extra seconds to troubleshoot, problem solve, and save some lives.
Thank you. Chief, you want to?
I want to add one more thing, please. We're going to go a little bit different direction. In the schools, we have officers that are called SROs, which are School Resource Officers who interact with the children within that particular school. And they know an awful lot of the kids, they know where the troubles are and where the troubles aren't, and they help immensely. If your son were to engage with that officer, then he would learn that some of those officers are very, very good people and may have a little bit more respect for others. The other side of the coin is if you would come to the PCRC meetings, bring your son with you, bring your children with you. You get introduced to the officers and interact with the officers. We have a lot of different things going on throughout the year, you know, and a few of them are geared specifically for the children, just to get them to meet all of the officers and so they can interact. Because it's a lot nicer to meet an officer when he's not on a call. And it's the same way with the Fire Department. If you meet them on a call, they're business. You go to a little event that I happen to put on for one particular group, and they're the nicest people in the world because they're not on call.
I want to extend Rusty's thought on that one more time. If we've got, if there's somebody in here who's a church leader or a citizen group leader, and you want a cop at your church on a Sunday to say hello, or you want a cop at your meeting, my district commanders hear me ad nauseam, get the cops out to the groups in the, in the, in the community. So if you want it, all you've got to do is call your district commander, I guarantee you, we will send a cop out. If it's a church on Sunday and you've got a little food, I'll double guarantee you we're going to send a cop.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to hear from one more person, I'm going to give some closing remarks.
Hi, I'm Cindy Robichaud, I live in Cape St. Clair. It occurs to me that we keep talking about communication, communication. And I'm the mother of four sons, and I've got to tell you, this generation, they're not so big on face-to-face communication. They seem totally lacking in the ability to have a face-to-face conversation, it's all through their thumbs, that's all they know. And so when we're talking about the body armor, if we were going to go in that direction, I think it should be used not just as to monitor what's going on, but as a training tool itself. To take, take some of the video images and say, okay, this is how this encounter happened, what was done right, how could we make this de-escalation of incidents, how can we improve what's going on? So not, don't just use it as a tool to monitor, but if you're going to go in that direction, it could be a real training tool for effective communication.
Ms. Cindy, I promise you, when we get there, one thing cops love is video because it tells a story much better than words. So we learn mountains out of video, and the unfortunate truth of that is, particularly in those videos where cops get killed, you know, we go over them routinely. So video's a good thing, you can rest assured, when we get there to that day, we will absolutely be using it to learn and get better.
Thank you. So I'd like to just kind of wrap this thing up and leave it on a good note. So the last 10, eight, 10 minutes of conversation have been geared towards the communication. I got it. A lot of our communication, this is me as the moderator, in my consulting hat now, having seen nationally things unfold, there seems to be a lot of discussion about the expectations of what, the perception, how police, how police are perceived by the gentlemen or folks hanging out on the street. Everybody needs to also remember that the folks that wear the badge and uniform are also human and have a perception of what they see. So I haven't heard anything tonight, and I'd like to kind of leave on a high note, that as we talk about the faith-based community, we talk about the organizations and things that we can do move forward, what the resource officers can do in school, all of that are activities that are happening outside of the home. So we take a step back, and before they even leave the house, educate some things on what some expectations from them need to be in dealing with the police. Because both sides are kind of operating with a little bit of fear. And I think as a former law enforcement officer, I operated with a little bit of fear every night, Mr. Hot SWAT Guy or whatever, because fear is what brings you home. So I think, I would love to have an opportunity as we cycle these things back, I think we need to spend a little bit more time with training and talk about some of the things, chief, that you're doing with training, and I'm fully aware of. Community police, I think that's a great thing, but police, citizens' police academies, where folks can come in and get an opportunity to spend weeks and go through some shoot, no shoot scenarios, so you're not so quick to talk about this one point something seconds and how to respond or whatever. Because until you're in those shoes, it's very difficult to make that judgment call. So there's a lot of education on both sides that we have to enlighten ourselves, and both sides need to be aware that there's a lot to learn. And I think I'd like to, real quick, as I know we're wrapping on time, county executive, I think you deserve a round of applause for allowing these discussions to happen. To the panelists, each one of you brings a level of your own expertise, you all have your forties as we move forward. I'd like to, as we move forward, try to extract a little bit more specifically on what you each bring to bear so we can educate a little bit more. So let's give them a round of applause. Chief, I'm going to get to you, but all my uniforms, can you just stand up for me real quick? Just let us see you. Everybody's in uniform. Work for the chief. Thank you for what you do. It's a, it's a job that goes, yes, sir?
Business cards for citizens' police academy, please.
Outstanding. Everybody should make their, he should have the biggest line afterwards.
This one event that is coming up, that we got an invitation to participate in...
That's exactly what I was talking about.
One, one point, a day and a half, day and a half, February 24th and 25th, is the Fair and Impartial Policing Command Community Training.
Day and a half?
Yeah.
I paid for two days.
Maybe they're going to give you extra training.
Hold on, as long as you have food, we'll be there.
And so this is an opportunity, again, to help folks understand the nature of the work a little bit more. And maybe in the next forum, we can talk some about the, one of my big concerns or big desires to help have more community and police interaction is the Citizen Police Review Board, where there are some issues, where there is an accusation of excessive force, or whether somebody was shot or killed. But that there would be training involved, so that you're not just pulling somebody off the street and what do you think? But they've been through training in the Citizen Police Academy, you've done some ride-alongs, you have some perspective on what it means to be a police officer. So that then... So that then you have a better, uh, fund of knowledge to help to evaluate situations.
I think that's critical. I always tell the story, my wife gets embarrassed. She did a ride-along with me years ago, and she lasted twenty-five minutes. Twenty-five minutes into my shift, she said, please take me home. That was twenty-five minutes into an eight, twelve-hour shift. But what I'm saying to you is to the wife of a K-nine officer, you refuse to go on one. It's real out there, and in her world, she, you know, God love her, she lived in a bubble. The reality of what she saw in certain communities that we were forced to work in, she had no idea that those things happened. So what I'm saying to you as a community at large, it's everybody's responsibility to do something. So I'd like to give each one of you, give yourselves a round of applause for being here. And chief, special thanks to you, and a round of applause to the chief for what you do. We appreciate it. Well, ladies and gentlemen, again, on behalf of the county executive and his team, we want to thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Panel, thank you again, and this has been great. Thank you, everybody.